Good morning and welcome to the Wednesday, May 15th, 2019 Board of County Commissioners Meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. Just a few announcements this morning. Sedgwick County is on Instagram. We've joined this platform. You can find us by typing in Sedgwick KS and searching that way. And there you'll see some photos and stories that we have shared here on this platform. And we encourage you, if you are on Instagram, to go ahead and give us a follow. And also, this Friday, there will be the Sedgwick County Law Enforcement Memorial at 10:00 AM at City Hall here in Wichita. This will be a moment for us to recognize those who have fallen in the line of service and thank them for their service. And then this Saturday, May 18th, is the Children's Art Show at the Old Cowtown Museum from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. And this is a collaboration between Calm Care, Calm Care Community Partners, and Wichita Public Schools. On the agenda this morning, we have three proclamations. One, celebrating a milestone birthday. One declaring Police Week. And one declaring National Public Works Week. We also have a review of the Northeast Heights Neighborhood Comprehensive Plan. And Commissioners, you'll receive a presentation of the quarterly financial report. So Chairman, I'll hand the meeting to you.
Well, thank you, Kate. I appreciate it. Commissioner Meitzner just asked me what Instagram was, so.
You can put all your pretty pictures.
Very good. Anyway, I want to welcome all the folks that are in the audience today, those who are joining us online, and those who are joining us on KPTS today. And I'd like to call the meeting to order for Wednesday, May 15th, 2019. Madam Clerk, next item.
Invitation to be observed by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell.
President.
Commissioner Cruz.
President.
Commissioner Howell.
President.
Commissioner Meitzner. Chairman Dennis.
President. Next item, please.
Public Agenda.
Thank you. I have one individual signed up to speak on Public Agenda this morning, Andrew Crane. Please go to the podium, state your name for the record, sir.
Yes, so let me just get around here a little bit.
Morning, Andrew.
Good morning. Good morning, County Commissioners. I wanted to invite you to a meeting that's going to be happening on June 20th with the IRA folks that are coming from San Diego to talk about new technology and how we can make the IRA access, this building and City Hall IRA access for blind and visually impaired folks in Wichita. They will be taking a tour of Wichita State, also be taking a tour of the city of Wichita, and they would like to visit your guys' building and get to visit with you guys. So I will be setting that up with you guys on June 20th. And I do have some information on the IRA access for you guys and would love to see you guys out there. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. If you give the information to Kate, she'll get a ditch of us. Thank you. Andrew is the only individual that we had signed up to speak on the Public Agenda, but if anyone else would like to speak, we have an opportunity for you to do that at this time. Seeing no one, Madam Clerk, next item.
Dr. Lee.
I'm sorry. I apologize. Please state your name for the record.
Yeah, Dr. Carla Lee, Vice Chair for the Multicultural Fashion Show, now called MECA. This Saturday at 6:00, May 18th, we'll have a food truck dinner silent auction. Then 7:00 to 9:00 will be a historical fashion show from the 1880s to current on using history of Wichita for the display. It's at the Kansas State University Extension, and $10 for tickets for the show, sponsored by the Multicultural Education and Celebration Association. There are six charities. La Familia Senior Community Center is one of them that is co-chairing the sponsorship.
Very good. Thank you. I know that Mayor Longwell signed up to speak at that, and I'm signed up to speak that evening. So I know that you'll have at least Mayor Longwell and I there.
Great.
And want to invite the other Commissioners to attend. Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak on Public Agenda this morning? All right. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item.
Proclamations. Item A, proclamation declaring Thelma Baker Islet Day.
Thank you. Commissioners, I have a proclamation I'd like to read. Whereas Thelma Baker Islet was born on May 23rd, 1919, in Wichita, Kansas, Wesley Hospital, the seventh of nine children of Charlie Baker and Minnie Nash Baker. And whereas Thelma worked hard to help provide for her family, growing vegetable gardens, raising chickens, and working outside the home in a variety of jobs, including aircraft worker, bus driver, school custodian, housekeeper, caretaker for the elderly and her family and furly. And whereas in her mid-50s, she received a CNA certification, began a new career at Wheat State Manor. Thelma enjoyed organizing activities and serving as the Activities Director until her retirement in her mid-70s. And whereas Thelma was dedicated and faithful in serving God through Furley United Methodist Church as a leader in the music ministry, children's Sunday School, youth group missions, United Methodist Women, as well as serving as church custodian for many years. In her 60s, Thelma helped organize the Over 60s Group, which met monthly for lunch over the next 30 years. And whereas a lifelong resident of Sedgwick County, Thelma has worked hard to make a positive Christian difference in her church, her family, her workplace, and her favorite hometown, Furley. In her new home at Reed's Cove, as a cancer survivor, Thelma is determined to live each day to the fullest, trusting God to provide and care for her family. Now therefore be it resolved that I, David T. Dennis, Chairman of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners and the entire Board of County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May 23rd, 2019 as Thelma Baker Islet Day and invite everyone to celebrate her 100th birthday with her four children, 12 grandchildren, 19 great-grandchildren, and their spouses and numerous nephews and nieces. I move to approve the proclamation.
Second.
I have a motion in a couple of seconds. Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And those of you that don't know, one of her sons, Joe Islet, is on the County Commission in Johnson County. And this morning, it's being accepted by Cheryl Islet Slater and family. Thank you for being here.
Good morning, Chairman Dennis, and good morning to all of you on the Sedgwick County Commission. I am Cheryl Islet Slater. I am Thelma's youngest child, her only daughter, and I am here on her behalf today and on behalf of all of my family. My brother Gary Islet is with me today, and also including my brother Ron Islet from Arveda, Colorado. My brother Ed Islet from Overland Park, Kansas, who currently serves as the Chairman of the Johnson County Commission. And from him, I bring you greetings and best regards for your meeting today. I'm also representing Thelma's grandchildren, her great-grandchildren, her many extended family members, her good friends, and her good, good neighbors from the Furley community. We thank you for this proclamation designating May 23rd as Thelma Baker Islet Day for her 100 years of citizenship in Kansas and Sedgwick County. We are hosting an open house to honor Mom on May 18th at the Furley United Methodist Church, 11,400 East, 101st Street North. That's at the corner of 101st Street North and Greenwich Road from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. And all of you on the Sedgwick County Commission are invited to join us in this celebration. Mom has set a wonderful example for all of us to follow in serving her Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, and following His teaching to love the Lord your God with all your heart, with all your soul, with all your mind, and to love your neighbor as you love yourself. Mom was a wonderful neighbor while she was living in the Furley community, and she continues to strive to be a good neighbor to the residents that she shares Reed's Cove with right now. In 1981, when my husband and I first purchased our home in Wichita, I talked to Mom about neighbors. Would I ever be able to have as good a neighbors in Wichita as we had while I was growing up in Furley and she had her whole time that she lived in Furley? And she said to me, "Honey, if you want to have a good neighbor, you need to be a good neighbor." I did always take my mom's advice when I was in my early 20s, but I did take that piece of advice. And five years later, when we sold that little home on Glen Street, I shed a few tears because I had to leave behind some really good neighbors. So on May 23rd, as you think about your actions here today, proclaiming that to be Thelma Baker Islet Day, I would also like to encourage you to take a walk across the street or take a walk down the block, take a walk down the road. Take my mom's advice. On May 23rd, do her the honor of being a good neighbor. Thank you again for this proclamation.
Thank you very much for being here today. We appreciate it, and we want to wish her a very happy birthday. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item B, proclamation declaring Police Week.
Thank you. Commissioners, I have a proclamation that I'd like to read. Whereas in 1962, the United States Congress first passed Public Law 87-726, designating May 15th of each year as Peace Officers Memorial Day, honoring federal, state, and local officers who have been killed or disabled in the line of duty, and the corresponding week as Police Week. And whereas over the years, devoted law enforcement officers of America have courageously sacrificed their personal safety while working on behalf of the people. And whereas because of their steadfast efforts to enforce our laws, we as citizens can enjoy a system of peace and order. And whereas Sedgwick County desires to honor the value of service and dedication of not only its own sheriff deputies, but peace officers everywhere. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Chairman David T. Dennis, and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May 12th to the 18th, 2019 as Police Week in Sedgwick County, and call upon all of our citizens to show their sincere appreciation for the many law enforcement officers of Sedgwick County, past, present, and their legacy of humble, dedicated service to the community. Move to approve the proclamation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And we have Colonel Powell here to accept.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, ma'am. On behalf of Sheriff Easter and the women and men of the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office, we thank you for the acknowledgement and proclamation of Police Week across the country you've provided this morning. Sheriff Easter is unable to be here this morning because he and other members of our staff are actually in Washington, DC today for the National Law Enforcement Memorial that's taking place, which will draw, they estimate, someplace in the neighborhood of about 40,000 people. And as Kate Flavin mentioned earlier, our local law enforcement memorial service will be this Friday across the street at the memorial, starting at 10:00 in the morning, which we will acknowledge those who have passed before us in the line of duty, serving their local communities, and at the same time, recognize one new name we add to the memorial, both locally here and in Washington, DC, that of Sheriff's Deputy Robert Coonsey III, who we know was killed in the line of duty last September. So again, we thank you on behalf of our office and all of law enforcement across the area for your wisdom in supporting this national recognition. So again, thank you.
Thank you, Colonel Powell. Commissioner Cruz.
I just want to say thank you so much for all you do. I think it's important in this day and age when people don't want to be cops and people don't want to be in the line of duty because of all the stigma that's attached to it. I just think it's a really courageous thing that our police officers do every single day to go in when it's somebody's crisis and to be calm and cool and make sure that we come out okay. So I just can't thank you guys enough for what you do.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Colonel Powell. And I want to express my gratitude for all of our first response, especially our police officers and sheriff's deputies for the service they provide. I know this is a bittersweet year, as we recognize Deputy Coonsey, and we will recognize him again on Friday. And I sincerely appreciate his family and the sheriff being in Washington, DC to honor him in DC this week.
Thank you, sir.
Please let your deputies know how much we appreciate it.
We'll do that, sir. Thank you again.
Thank you, Colonel. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item C, proclamation declaring National Public Works Week.
Thank you. Commissioners, I have a proclamation I'd like to read. Whereas public works services provided in our community are an integral part of citizens' everyday lives. And whereas the support and understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as streets, highways, bridges, drainage improvements, environmental services, household hazardous waste, noxious weed control. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is especially dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is substantially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Chairman David T. Dennis, and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May 19th to 25th, 2019 as National Public Works Week in Sedgwick County, and I call upon all the citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Move to approve the proclamation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. David, welcome.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, David Spears, Director of Public Works. Since 1960, APWA, that's American Public Works Association, has sponsored National Public Works Week. Across North America, our more than 30,000 members in the US and Canada use this week to energize and educate the public on the importance of the contribution of public works to their daily lives, planning, building, managing, and operating in the heart of our local communities and building the quality of life. APWA has chosen "It Starts Here" as the theme for the 2019 National Public Works Week. This theme represents the many facets of modern civilization that grow out of the efforts put forth by the public works professionals across North America. What starts here? Infrastructure starts with public works. Growth and innovation starts with public works. Mobility starts with public works. Security starts with public works. Healthy community starts with public works. The bottom line is that citizens' quality of life starts with public works. Thank you for the proclamation. I don't want to remind you once again, infrastructure is the mother's milk of economic development.
I've heard that.
This is our national poster.
Very good. Well, David, as always, we appreciate everything Public Works does for us. And I also want to thank the Islet family for being here today, our sheriff's office, and everyone that works in Public Works. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, next item.
New Business. Item D, Northeast Heights Neighborhood Comprehensive Plan Amendment for a one-square-mile area generally located between North Hillside Avenue and North Oliver Avenue and between East 21st Street North and East 29th Street North.
Good morning.
Good morning. Well, good morning, Commissioners. I'm Mary Hunt with the Planning Department. You have before you today a request to amend our comprehensive plan. Now, in late 2018, staff was invited to several meetings with residents of the Northeast Heights Neighborhood Association regarding their concerns about commercial development adjacent to, actually, commercial development pressures in their neighborhood. So the area in question, let me see if I can get it. Did it come up? I can't see here.
There should be an icon where to go. There's no icon.
All right. The area in question, though, is a one-square-mile area located in northeast Wichita. It's bounded by 21st Street on the south, 29th Street on the north, Hillside on the west, and Oliver on the east. And the Planning Department historically has received two applications, one in 2013, one in 2018, to rezone a few parcels in the far southeast corner of this one-square-mile area. And in both cases, the requests were unsuccessful. And so as such, staff took these decisions as policy direction of our city council's desire and the county commission's desire to protect the residential character of the area. So in response to the neighborhood association's concern, staff drafted five policies, all of which are consistent with our existing comprehensive plan. Now, you should have in your packet something called Item D, and that lists the five policies that we drafted. And so the Planning Commission then conducted their public hearing just last week, and at that time, two of those policies were removed. And the subsequent three policies are noted in your agenda report. So the City Council, I'm sorry, the Planning Commission removed Policies 1 and 2, leaving Policies 3, 4, and 5 in their recommendation. So, and so we went to the Wichita City Council, and those five policy statements were reinstated in their ruling. So the first, the policies that the Planning Commission approved were, then this is just a summary, that if there is going to be more intense development, and it's found to be appropriate, that it be limited to the three lots in the far southeast corner of this study area. And if possible, that they be developed as just one project, not separate projects. The second one relates to the buffering between the commercial development and the residential uses with masonry wall or enhancing the landscaping. And then the last policy was that construction projects submit drainage plans that meet all our policies and ordinances. And then the two policies that were removed are that rezoning or conversion of existing single-family residential properties to some, to something more intensive, that that should be discouraged, and that strip development along Oliver, north of 21st Street, is discouraged and considered an intrusion on the adjacent residential property. Like I said, those last two were removed from the Planning Commission's recommendation. So with that, the decision that you have before you today is adopt the recommendation of the Planning Commission, keeping only three policies. You can override the recommendation from the Planning Commission and keep all five, as the city council did, or return the case to the Planning Commission for reconsideration, or of course, you can deny the plan amendment. So you have one of four options there.
Thank you. A couple of things. I don't know if we need to declare ex parte contact on this, but I have received, we don't, okay. Well, then I won't declare ex parte contact, but I did receive several emails. Another thing, I want to make sure I disclose, as I did sit on the MAPC during the previous discussions on these developments, and I believe that Commissioner Meitzner sat on the City Council during both of those discussions in the previous past. So just to make sure that everybody understands that we do have experience with this case. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. I have received also a lot of communication from neighbors. This property actually resides in my district, and so I am familiar with the area. I did not sit on the City Council, nor did I sit on the MAPC when all this was an original development. But I just want to say that I would like to make a motion that...
Let's have a public comment first.
Okay, so we need to have public comment first.
Does anyone else have any questions of staff first, before we open up a public comment?
I've got questions, please.
Mr. Meitzner.
Mary, would you clarify? So the first two policies that are reinserted back into this, and I as well have had emails and other conversations and was around both times, anyway, so, but these first, the two that were inserted, it says more intensive zoning districts where uses should be discouraged. And the rest one, the next one says west of Oliver is discouraged.
Correct.
So does that mean that in the future, the property owners, if they have an opportunity to do something more than grow weeds, they can bring an item to Planning and City Council, and then those, that Planning Commission and that council can approve whatever they would approve or disapprove, whatever the property owners bring to the Planning?
They certainly can. These are simply policy guides in reaction to the residents' concerns. That's why when you have, you know, commercial activity is discouraged, it doesn't mean it's prohibited. That's why when we went on to Policy 3, said, "Well, if you deem it good to have this convert to something, let's have something of a low-intensity nature." It doesn't prohibit any owner of property from petitioning their government to rezone or for governing bodies to approve.
Okay, so I understood. I talked to the council member that represents there, and he was understanding of kind of what you said, that they can do whatever they want to do, they just got to apply and bring it forward. Dale, you're shaking yes. And of course, then can have public comment, and whatever that current or future council can approve or disapprove.
That's correct.
He mentioned that he thought there was a number of meetings between the neighborhood and the property owners, and that really, the property owners were stating that they kind of object to a restaurant, but anything else could go.
Well, one would consider a restaurant, especially fast-food restaurants with drive-throughs, as being rather high-intensity development because of noise and light pollution. But there are other uses like offices, a dentist's office, an insurance agent, things like that, that are relatively low-intensity because their hours of operation are so limited.
Right. But so there's no language in these that restrict it to say no, doesn't say no restaurants, doesn't say no drive-ins.
That's correct. Because in a comprehensive plan, you still need to leave things at a general level. When you start over-prescribing, it stops being a part of the comprehensive plan, and is maybe more conducive to a planned unit development.
So another question, thanks for addressing, clarifying that. And so, Mary, you mentioned in your presentation, so I'm a little confused, this is over a whole square mile?
Yes.
But only applies to three lots?
No, it applies to the whole square. It applies to the entire area, but they're, those three lots in the southeast corner were identified only because of previous action. But it does apply to the entire area in preserving the residential character.
Up Hillside, up to 29th Street, if anybody wants to do anything, this applies.
They would still use these as guidance.
And it does not apply to anything that WSU wants to do along 21st Street?
It does not. No.
I think in '12 or '13, it was still on golf course.
No, okay.
And there was a disbelief that anything would happen, but in a matter of four years, it's being very, very developed in a positive way, including an intersection that is now double-turn lanes every way and development and everything else. So it's natural that that... So it's natural that that corner should be more than weeds.
Okay.
But I'm just wondering the impact it's going to have, I don't even know the rest, the remaining mile section, that, what kind of controversy or not this is going to create on the whole, the whole mile section.
One of the things we wanted to avoid is, this really isn't a rehearing of the previous zoning cases. These policies would apply to the entire square mile. Any property owner within the square mile can obviously file an application. The policies would then be used, as Mary said, to evaluate that application, but obviously the Planning Commission and the governing body would be able to make their appropriate decision as they see reasonable and fit. But the, the whole point of the plan was to try and protect the residential character of the area because it is 90-plus percent all single-family homes.
Okay. Well, I think it's very logical, traditional planning applications, that there's going to be a buffer and wall, or all the aesthetics that go along with that.
Right.
The, it's recommended that they, that these three lots are, it's preferred or recommended these three lots are unified as one project, but...
That would be preferred mostly because of, you know, ingress and egress being so close to the intersection. I mean, if that very last lot, the furthest south, had drive, you know, driveway cuts going in, people would wait a long time to get out.
Right.
So, but it's not, it's not a requirement, it's just desirable that it be that way.
So if that, I think the middle property is, the owner is difficult to find?
Uh huh.
So it's going to be hard for three properties to be one if somebody can't be found?
Right, yeah.
I'm sorry?
Pardon? Oh, it's the third one north that has the...
Oh, okay.
Has the ownership issue.
So the first two at least could do something, potentially. The third one to the north is unknown. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for answering those questions.
Other questions for staff? I see no other questions for staff. At this time, I'll open up public comment. If anyone in the audience would like to speak on this issue, now is an opportunity. Just state your name for the record.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Steve Falke, and I reside at Three Crestview Lakes Estates in Wichita. I am involved in the Northeast Heights Neighbors Association. I'm also the president of the Crestview Lakes Homeowners Association, which is 16 homes, the three of which you were discussing, are part of that smaller homeowners association, which is a part of the larger group. I think it's a bit unfortunate that the focus has seemed to come down to three properties within a square mile. We're simply trying to be a good neighbor. We've heard a lot about being a good neighbor, and I think to be a good neighbor, it takes one to be one. And we are seeing WSU's development. We are watching that closely, and we're also watching development across the, on the northeast side of the, of the intersection that we're talking about. And I think, you know, there's a lot of development that's happening, but there's also a lot of development that is not happening. And our desire as neighbors and as a group of individuals within that neighborhood is to simply maybe align ourselves more with some of the planning that's going on, with Wichita Places for People and some of those other things that are happening, and put some energy into being a good neighbor and being able to, you know, have a say in a little bit of what might happen in our neighborhood in the future. I will say that there is a lot of stuff that's going to probably be happening down Hillside, and hopefully further on down Oliver. So the Northeast Heights, being one of the most intact residential neighborhoods in the city, and also one, a neighborhood with one of the lowest crime rates anywhere in the city, we feel like adopting all of those five policies into the plan, as the District Advisory Board did unanimously, and the City Council did unanimously, is simply good planning. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Any questions?
Any questions? No, see, thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this issue? Please state your name for the record.
My name is Lonnie Barnes. I live at 2924 North Terrace, here in Wichita, Kansas. So guys, I'm also a part of the Northeast Heights Neighborhood Association. So I'm going to hold this up, and I know you can't read it, but I'm going to help you out with the colors and the borders here. So this is a map here of opportunity zones, one of the incentives that the city is putting out, the state, the nation's putting out, for investors to come into various states and cities and districts to, for low-income, low-development areas to improve them. So when I show you this, this is the blue area. So when I talk about opportunity zones, that's just one incentive that's been offered for developers in here. So this is, these are the areas identifying this. So when I go across here, this is 21st Street, starting on this side, going all the way down to Broadway, Broadway over to here, over to Central, coming up this side. And so the things I point out to you that are very important, look at this. So when we come down 21st, and this is the property you're talking about up in this corner, right here, three blocks, but they're setting the precedence for a square mile that sits out here. Most of that's residential, and you have natural boundaries and things that prohibit a lot of things. You're almost at 96 when you get past 29th Street on down here, so you've got some natural boundaries. When I come across here, this area right here is I-35. And so when I come down here, 21st Street, 17th Street, from Hills to Oliver to Broadway, from 13th down to Broadway, from 9th Street down to there to Central, most of this area that's not colored in is predominantly minority investments in your minority communities and stuff. And so when I say this is a natural boundary, this is a canal route that goes through there. So you, and nothing's going to develop along there, and most of that now is in the flood zone. So you restricted a lot of things to that nature. When I come down from 17th Street, there's no exit to get off on 17th. 13th, you get off there, and that's the only way you get over to, over here to Hillside. And you see, when you come across Hillside here, that's the other natural boundary. So most of this area is low-development, low-income, that's not getting any incentive or attention to do this. And so when I say this part here, when you, when you put the restrictions on this, sometimes you're choking down the lifelines that even feed to this, this community in here. So you've got to be cognizant of what you do here, and over here, which is now predominantly minorities that live in that, that area of Northeast Heights, in here, you're also choking down there. You've got cemeteries that take along over here, cemeteries that take along here. I am boxing in everything. And if you don't put some kind of lifeline in here to encourage investors to come down to this area in here and do something in here, people will only rise to the, to the level in which they see. And if you see no jobs, or you see nothing happening in your community, what do you do? You resort to what you see, crime, you resort to gangs and everything else. So all you've done is isolated and put us in an area where we can't do much. So guys, I'd say you consider what you do here for three, for three lots, and I don't know how many, how many dentists and doctors you think are going to come in there as a collaboration to develop that whole area. You're not going to do that. So all the things that we want to, we do creature features, whether it's a nice restaurant, the guy's proposed, whether it's those things, we travel out of that neighborhood to go to supermarkets, we travel out of those neighborhoods, go to Rock, way up Greenwich, to eat, restaurants and everything else, but we don't encourage anything to come to this direction and down into there. And right now, Wichita State is your natural, and they sit right here in the opportunity zone, but across the street, no's going down the left out, and so are these down through here. So you've got a catalyst that's starting some things in here, and you want to take advantage of it. You know, all that sits in your, in your plans. You've seen the 1995, 2005, '15 developmental plans, and nothing has progressed, and each study shows a regression in those areas. So just consider what you do in this one-mile area in here. Policies and procedures direct companies, organizations. And so what you've done now is put policies, procedures, when anyone wants to reference this, what happens in there, they're going to look at those first. It's not going to be Willie Vanilli, they'll look at those first. So it's important right now, because these things have come before, and they say they can come before it again in here, but once you put policies, there was no policies and procedures which direct them. Now you've given them, and you don't. So last thing, we had, we've had a big incident going on about the poles in northeast area, in those areas in here. People are complaining that they didn't understand, didn't know. And so when I tell you, you've got Northeast Heights Neighborhood Association, I think that's another rope-a-dope here, where you're saying, "Hey, we're not, we're going to keep all this residential, keep this, keep you all safe in here." But right now, you're choking off the lifeline, that's economic development that has to start somewhere. Okay?
Thanks, sir. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this issue? Please state your name for the record.
Mr. Dennis James Roseborough, 4518 Greenbrier, and I'm the president of the Northeast Heights Neighborhood Association. In this time of trouble, country, city, state, whatever you want to call it, I appreciate the people in Northeast Heights coming together to keep our era together. Nobody's saying that no development, you hadn't had that mentioned till today. We just want to keep the area looking nice, while not somebody to know what can come in and what can't come in. I do believe, I don't care where you live in the city of Wichita, Cedric County, or wherever, you want your neighborhood to look good. And I appreciate the people coming together and working on a plan to say, "Well, they want, want in their neighborhood." This has got nothing to do with development down 17th Street, or wherever it's going to go to. We are talking about our one little area between 21st Street, our boundaries go from 21st Street to 37th Street. We only went from 21st Street to 29th Street. And so I want to thank the City Planning Department for helping us come up with this plan, to do this, and I think it's a good plan. Nobody in, nowhere along the line is that say we're against development. We just want to be able to say what we want to come into our community. And everybody in this room has got that same opportunity. Nobody wants anything dumped on them, and that's what they are saying here, and that's what we are saying here. To come in and open it up, and come in and say, "We want something nice." I don't care if it's a restaurant, or whatever, doctor's offices. I know some things we don't need up there. We don't need, we do not need any more payday loans. We not, we do not need any more Dollar Jones stores, we got them all around us. We want something nice in that community that's go-develop and bring it out. So this has been going on for some time, and that neighborhood association has been around ever since 1961. It's one of the oldest neighborhoods, the first, the third oldest neighborhood in the city of Wichita. Like you said before, crime rate, we got the lowest crime rate in the city and the county. It's because the people work for that, fight to what we want to come in and to keep it together. So thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Oh, any questions, Mike?
Does any Commissioners have a question? I see none, thanks, sir.
Okay.
Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this issue? Please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Julia Falke. I'm at Three Crestview Lakes Estates here in Wichita. And basically, for me, we have done a lot of due diligence. We worked really closely with the Planning Department. We had a lot of neighborhood meetings, and we heard from a lot of people, not just on the three properties that everybody wants to make this about. It's on that square mile, because that's all that we could bite off and deal with. There's more properties, you know, going all the way up to 96 that probably need to be addressed at some point, but we, as the NEHNA, just want to make sure that the residential aspect of our community is protected. And then if it is decided that commercial property or commercial development is appropriate, then some guidelines along there, and, and trying to dissuade people from doing just hodgepodge development down Oliver or down 21st Street. So what we're asking, and we've got several residents here, what we're asking is that you all would adopt all five policies, as was recommended by the DAB. Again, they did that unanimously, and then the City Council that also adopted all five. So we're not saying that we're ignorant and that we think that there will never be any commercial development, but we just feel like having policies in place that helps to protect the residential nature of the neighborhood is really important. So thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Any questions? I don't see any, thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this issue? Sir, please state your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Michael Marks, and I own the property, or my family owns the property there at 21st and Oliver that we're talking about. And we have had a zoning case, two zoning cases on the property there at 21st and Oliver. And I appreciate the neighborhood coming out, we work with the neighborhood. I want to thank Dale and all the, all the things that's happened in the last couple of, oh, about five years. You know, the elephant in the room on this deal is WSU. And I commend WSU for what they have done. We need development like that in the, in that neighborhood. I believe that they're going to put in some restaurants and stuff like that, too, also. But Barto passing away, I guess they're, they're going into transition, and again, you know, we work with the neighborhood. My, my only problem is that, you know, you aspire to the, to where you look. In quantum physics, one of the things that they say, and I can understand it, is if you don't look, it doesn't happen. Once, once you look, it does happen. And that's one of the laws of quantum physics. You know, we could sit here all day long and try to discuss this, but 21st and Oliver, my dad used to live there. It was a nice neighborhood. We never were part of the Crestview Neighborhood Association, for, for anybody that wants to know that. And I think there's another house, I think it's 13, that's not part of the neighborhood also. And I think that the people that developed that at the very beginning, the Crestview Country Club, had a vision that maybe in the future, that 21st and Oliver was going to be changed, and they did, they didn't want to bring in that corner for just residential. Way back in like '50 or '55, when they, when they created Crestview Lakes Association, the house at 21st and Oliver is not part of, and never has been, part of any association because of that. And I believe 13 is the, the house on the most northern boundary of that development. We tried to get a hold of the person that owns the house at 13 Crestview, to no avail. We've had certified letters sent out to this person, but I guess they're paying the taxes, but it's a condemned house, and people here in the room are saying that, you know, that they want to keep the neighborhood nice. Well, if you go up and down that neighborhood, there's a lot of vacant homes out there, there's a lot of rental homes out there. Fifty-some thousand people go by there now. My dad, at the very end of his life, you know, he had some statuary, and they, they ran over his statues and stuff like that, people were taking shortcuts, going through that at 30 miles an hour. We tried to, we tried to keep the house residential, it's just impossible. We, we don't want to have a, we want to be good neighbors. Born and raised here in Wichita, I had a lot of, lot of nice experiences there at the house. But somebody doing 30 miles an hour, and my dad's on a wheelchair, and the statuary, and I don't know how to tell him, "Your dad, just, I'm sorry," or, you know, he's a, he's a, it's just, it's terrible. My mom loved the house. Matter of fact, I think it made news several times during the Christmas holidays, several, several times. For anyone in the room to say that we're not part of the community would be, be a bad deal. I think we want to be part of the community. What we want to do is to develop it. That's what we want to do. The highest and best use, and everybody in this room, I think, understands that, that you have to do what you have to do with your property, or... you have to do what you have to do with your property, or, you know, we, like Mr. Meisner said, there's gonna be weeds growing around. The house at Thirteen Crestview is vacant. There's a house on the backside, number eight, that's vacant. Yeah, I could go on and on. There's a lot of rentals in that area, in, in the Crestview. Is there, who else is from Northeast Heights Neighborhood here? No, no, I said Northeast, you're from Crestview.
You're from Northeast Heights.
No, you're from Crestview. There's sixteen houses in Crestview. How many is it?
All of Northeast Heights.
I, I don't see that many.
All of Northeast Heights.
So what I'm trying to say, I don't think that there's that many Northeast Heights neighbors here today, but I want everyone in the room to understand that this is something that needs to be done at that corner. We've told the neighbors that we were gonna do a protective overlay. We had a customer, or an in-user, the QuickTrip, or the Quick Shop, they didn't want that. On top of that, we had Senator Gooch's property to the north that was involved in it, and CVS, or, I'm sorry, a drugstore wanted to come in. Nice services, you know, they, it's a food desert in that area. Does anybody know that in the room, that there's a food desert in that area? So I don't know exactly what I'm trying to say. I wanna get along with everybody in this room. I want the neighbors to understand that I'm not complaining, but I believe that we just want everyone in the room to understand that the property needs to be developed, and it can't just be forced down to low use like that. You know, I mean, just to make you guys understand something that I can't put my, I can't wrap my head around, there's a square mile, and these three houses have been chosen because of their location, and why were they chose? I mean, why were these three homes chose? The reason they were chose is because development has to happen on those three homes. And to say that it only could be a low impact on the neighborhood, on traffic, is unbelievable. Because now, the focus of the university is that it takes away from Hillside and comes up to Twenty First and Oliver and becomes the entrance to the university. When somebody comes into Wichita ten, fifteen years from now, and they go through that corridor, with everybody's help, maybe it might be someplace that people will go back and say, you know, I went to Wichita, and those folks had a nice grand entrance to the university there at Twenty First and Oliver. They had a destination restaurant, they had services up there, they had a nice innovation campus across the street. You know, I just, that's what I envisioned. No one wants low impact better than I would. I, I would like to see low impact if it was someplace where there wasn't fifty or sixty thousand cars going by. And it's become a treasure in Wichita now. The university has made a little treasure out there for us to all get together and make this happen. I'll take questions to someone, anybody who wants to ask, or...
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
So where do you currently live?
I, I, well, you know, that, that, thank you for reminding me about that. I was going to move over there.
Well, where do you currently live?
I, I do live there. I had a break-in, a large break-in about four months ago at that house.
So you've lived there up until four months ago?
Yeah, but I'm not debating you about that.
No, I'm just asking where you live, that's all.
I have several residents.
So you don't currently live there?
Yeah, I, I live there, too. Yes, I have to watch the property.
Well, so you, you go there every single night?
Ma'am, what, what did, your, your questioning is?
I'm just asking, I'm just asking where you live at in reference to this neighborhood. So how often do you visit this neighborhood to have vested interest?
Ma'am, my, my dad, my dad owned a house since nineteen eighty-something.
Okay, well, I'm just asking where you currently reside.
When I was younger, I lived there most of, most of the time. I, I used to hang out with my dad and mom most of the time.
Okay.
Thank you.
You didn't really answer my question.
Okay, ma'am, I, I have several homes. I, I live in several. I was gonna move in there, and then we had a terrible break-in, and we, we said there's no way that we could live at that corner.
So it's been quite a while since you've lived there?
About four months ago that we officially just said, we're not gonna stay in there.
Okay.
After the zoning case was denied, we, we just lost all, all, you know, we, we, I just said, I'll, I'll move in.
I guess the point that I'm...
Is there a basis for, what is, what is your basis about? I'd love, I love that area, if there's...
Well, I guess what I'm trying to ask is that, for those who live there and breathe there every single day, they have sort of a stake in the claim. And to me, I mean no disrespect, but to me, it seems like you want to sell the property and move.
No, 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 no.
Would you say that that's what you want to do?
No, I, we have several homes in Wichita, we have, I have several businesses, interests here in Wichita. Never left Wichita, I'm, I'm from here. I'm, I'm not from New York, I'm from here.
Okay, and that's great. I'm, I'm, I'm not from, I, I moved here in two thousand and six, but I would say that I, I have vested interest.
My grandfather was born here in nineteen oh-two, at the Two Forks at the rivers here, ma'am.
Okay.
In nineteen oh-two.
So the question I'm asking, though, is how frequently are you at this home? What is the vested interest that you have in this neighborhood outside of selling this property?
I'm not, I didn't say I'm going to sell the home either. We're going to develop.
Well, that's selling the home. You're gonna sell it to a developer to, to develop it, right?
No, we're going to...
You're gonna develop it yourself?
Lease it, lease the property.
Okay.
Back to an in-user. That's, that's the way we're going to do it. I don't know if, if anybody knew that either. We're, we're not selling, we're, we're going to lease it.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. I don't see any other questions for the speaker. Thank you for being...
Okay, thank you. And again, I thank you for your, I don't know what you're, where you're going with that, but the emphasis is that there is a home that we need to really emphasize that needs to be either torn down or something needs to happen. Have you been by that home at Thirteen?
I sure have, I walked that neighborhood.
At Thirteen?
Yeah.
And the...
Yeah.
What do you think about that one?
I think that it has some challenges, and I think that we could do a better job, but yes.
Is there someone living there?
Um, I, I don't, I don't know that I need to be questioned.
No, no, I just was wondering, if you knew if somebody, you said you walked the neighborhood, do you, do you know anybody that's living there, or?
We're not gonna engage in a debate to...
Okay, no, no, I'm not even, thanks, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Does anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this subject? Saying none, I'm gonna bring it back to the bench at this time. Did you have...
I have questions for staff.
Commissioner Hal has.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions for staff, if you don't mind. Our first question is, has, which Shaw Area Builders Association weighed in on this at all?
They have not.
They have not? Have they been asked, do you know, if they've, just didn't?
I've not asked them, no.
Okay, they follow MAPC pretty closely, so, in fact, I think they have some members from their association that even probably sit on MAPC, so I was just wondering if they had any input. Do we know how many residences are, are in the one square mile altogether?
I believe it's in...
Or how many people live in that square mile?
A little over three thousand.
There you go.
Three thousand residences or three thousand people?
Residents.
Three thousand residences? I'm not that familiar with this area, but I'm, I'm just trying to think about what I, what I know what's up and down those streets. I mean, there's, there are some commercial properties along Hillside and Twenty Ninth and...
There are, yes.
And Oliver and Twenty First.
Yeah, there's a multifamily complex up on Twenty Ninth and Oliver.
Is that like an apartment complex?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It is, yeah.
How long is that, do you know how long that's been there?
What a home is that. It looks, it looks new, but it's...
It's probably ten or twelve years old.
Yeah.
Okay. You see, it's about ten or twelve years old for the audience that might not be here that, so.
Yeah.
It's an apartment complex, about ten or twelve years old. And your Neighborhood Association, and I, James Rosenberg, thank you for your service to the Neighborhood Association organizations across our city, and I appreciate you very much for your service, and, but I am curious, how many people from this community have, have, have been going to these meetings that have spoken up? We heard from, how many, how many people are, are involved in the conversation here?
Oh, there, I think there were about seventy-five...
Okay.
People. And we went to, I went to three meetings, I think Dale went, went to five when it first started.
Someone mentioned the, the term protective overlay. Is that, is that something that we should, i- is there a, is there a protective overlay anywhere in, in this discussion? In terms of what can or cannot be?
Well, there was a protective overlay proposed historically on, on the, the corner lots that was declined by the Planning Commission and City Council.
Okay.
Dale might remember more.
Protected overlay is actually an overlay zoning district that would be applied if someone actually filed a zone change. This is a policy guidance document that would be aimed at, basically, the Wichita City Council, when they hear zoning cases, to use as their guidance for whether to approve a specific request or not. Because it's part of the comprehensive plan, both governing bodies are offered the opportunity to approve it. And so this really is a policy guidance for the entire square mile, not specific to those three lots that have been the subject of previous cases. But a protective overlay is actually a overlay zoning district in the zoning code.
Okay. Do we have any, do we have this type of language for any other neighborhood in Central County or the city of Wichita? Is this a...
There are neighborhood plans, what, thirteen of them, I think, throughout the, the community. Each plan has policies that are specific to their needs. The policies that are here have been taken from other zoning cases and from other neighborhood plans that have been approved in the past, so that's why we settled on some of the wording that we have here, is because it's been, been used and been adopted on, in previous situations.
And so reference to your answer just now, is that for all five of these, or, or for three of them, or? In other words, you said there's similar language in other parts of the comprehensive plan for certain, I guess thirteen other areas of the community. Would that be true for all five of these, potentially?
Yes, for example, the South Central Neighborhood Plan has a statement that says that lists uses that they find least desirable, among them auto salvage and car sales. And so anytime a application is applied for, in the, in the area that's covered by the South Central Neighborhood Plan, we use that policy as guidance for those particular uses.
Could this be more specific in terms of if they had certain things they wanted to specifically list that they don't want, would that be something that could be done here?
What staff was trying to do here was walk a very fine line down the middle of the road between a only residential or very limited low-impact uses like residences versus a wide-open convenience store kind of an operation. And so what we were trying to do is, was go down the middle of the road of something that could be approved by most of the parties involved.
I'm curious on the twenty thirteen and twenty eighteen zoning application, applications that were made, what was, what was the conclusion of those two?
Well, both of them were denied, but I really don't think that has anything to do with this particular policy.
Well, what I'm getting to is, is based on, you know, I, I, every time there's a zoning application that's made, there's a community input, there's public hearing, there is opportunities to be heard and to speak. And I think that there's, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's nine golden factors we take into account on whether things should be approved or denied.
Correct.
And the comprehensive plan is one of the considerations.
Yes.
And so, in those previous cases, they were denied based on whether a comprehensive plan was in place at that time, and the public, the public hearings that were, that were conducted at that time, they resulted in a denial. And so this is, whether we approve this or not today, doesn't mean this is approving any type of zoning plan, or any project, or any, you know, any, any, there's nothing, there's nothing other than the comprehensive plan that's being adjusted today. And that would be, if we adopt this, any part of this today, that would be considered in one of the golden factors. They would actually look at the comprehensive plan, and it would encourage them to take a particular action in that zoning case in the future.
It is a policy statement that is required to review, be reviewed by the, the governing body, and they can follow it or not follow it. But yes, it's, it would be one of the golden factors that would be considered, but there's no requirement that the council follow them as long as they have reasonable arguments on why they want to go against it.
One of my concerns on the first couple, these first two policies, is that it's not specific. And to just say it's discouraged without knowing the situation, I think is, is difficult to just be very broad-brush that way.
That's...
And that's my concern.
Design, I think that's by design.
Yeah, I mean, I, I hear you. I, I, that's my, number one concern here, I think, is that we, we don't know what we're, what we're discouraging. If I knew what it was, it might be different, but...
I mean, the, the, the objective was to protect the existing neighborhood homes there. So that first policy statement was basically addressing the majority of the neighbors' concerns about protecting the, the residential character. That's just a broad statement that is similar to many other policy statements about being opposed to stripping out arterial streets. Even though the policy is there, it doesn't mean that on an individual, specific application, that they have to follow it. Because those circumstances about that specific application may trump this generalized statement.
Well, that's my number one concern. If, I wish it was more specific. So I, I see number one and two as it currently is worded. To me, it's, it's a little arbitrary, a little broad-brush, and I wish I had more details as to what we're, what we're discouraging. So as it's currently sitting out, I feel great, great about numbers one and two here. But, and in terms of, you know, the, the people speaking, this wasn't a, you've heard from, we've heard some, from some, and I'm, I, I appreciate their concern, they're very passionate, and appreciate them for coming today to speak, but there's three thousand residents or three thousand people in this, in this area that we're impacting with this decision today, and I don't know how many, how many of them are even aware of this debate that's going on.
My understanding is the Neighborhood Association put flyers out for everybody that's part of a member, the, the folks in the neighborhood, and that the meetings, I would tell you, very frankly, of the, of the folks that attended the meetings, it was overwhelmingly supported, the language that you see today. Obviously, there were one or two people that were in attendance that have a different vision than what the majority of the people in this specific square mile do. But staff feels like these five policy statements address the overwhelming majority's desire for the land use policies to deal with that square mile.
So you, as director of MAPC, your recommendation today is what?
We're, well, the, since the city council adopted all five, that would be the recommendation that we would have.
Because right now, what I'm seeing is the options that have been laid out as potential motions for us today.
Certainly.
One of them is to, is to support MAPC recommendation, and that says that's the recommended action. And then, so, and I think our staff, you know, normally in our, in our agenda material, there's usually a staff recommendation, and I think today this one actually recommends to approve MAPC, so...
It's because at the time this was being presented, the council hadn't done their action yet, and so what we were trying to do was provide the full range of options for you.
All right.
Yeah.
And it is, it's also clear that MAPC was a split vote, and the DAB board was also a split vote. No, they weren't?
No, when they were unanimous. No, the, the DAB approved it unanimously.
Oh, they did?
Yes, they did. And the city council approved it unanimously with all five policies.
All right. All right, well, thank you, that's all my questions for now, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
So, thank you, Chairman. I just wanna say thank you to all the neighbors who are here today. I do wanna make a point that our meetings are at nine AM in the morning on a Wednesday, and so some people, some of the three thousand people who live in your neighborhood might not be able to attend, so that might be one reason why there is not an overwhelming majority of people here today. So that's the first point that I wanna make. The second point that I wanna make is I do believe these neighbors want to see development. The second point that I want to make is I do believe these neighbors want to see development. I do believe that. I believe that they want to protect the integrity of their neighborhood, which is why they're here. Many of you probably don't know this, but the whole reason why I'm sitting in this chair is because of this, something very similar in my own neighborhood. As you all may remember, the law enforcement training center has now vacated to a very beautiful facility out on the Innovation Campus. But that old training facility sits in my neighborhood of Sherwood Glen. And to ensure that I knew what was going in, I made a point to get my neighborhood association together, rallied around. We went from about ten people that showed up to now we have about thirty in attendance. So there is power in people, and I would encourage you guys to keep doing what you're doing because you have the power to figure out what the heck goes on that corner, which is what I see today. So I just want to commend you guys. One thing as a commissioner, I represent 100,000 people. When you say you have a boss, I have 100,000 bosses. That is my responsibility is to represent the people who elected me. So I also want to mention that I do not believe that Mr. Marx has lived in that house for four months. I do believe he has a financial interest in this, in this lot, and that's the reason why he's here today speaking out against that. So I just want to say that I am not against development. The area right across the street to the east is sort of a rundown strip mall. Why can't that be developed? Why can't we focus our energy there? So I also want to just state, I don't want to see a bunch of weeds growing in people's properties. I get that. But we have to figure out a solution, and we have to come up with solutions. So I say all that to make a motion, and is this appropriate time? Okay, I'm learning, guys, so you'll have to forgive me for my eagerness to get things going. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the adoption of policies one through five. I move that we override the recommendation of the MIPC and approve the comprehensive plan amendment for the Northeast Heights Neighborhood Plan with the adoptions of policies one through five that were originally presented to the MIPC.
Thank you. I'll second the motion. Any discussion on this motion?
Commissioner Meitzner.
Yeah, thank you for the motion and the second. I just, I'm encouraged this morning by hearing the neighbors, it sounds like an effort to work together with the three properties to try to make something well. It's sad that when we looked at this in 2012, we probably never thought that that whole corner would be changing, except for those two or three properties. Like I said, 50,000 cars a day, it is what it is. Innovation Campus is going on, saving, saving our, in a way, accelerating our education for our whole community at all ages. And so I think it'd be very sad if we were here seven or eight years from now, like we are seven or eight years from 2012, and that property still looked the same, and the neighbors were still in disagreement with the developer on not coming up with something. So I challenge that, I hope that between the property owners and the neighbors, that everybody would have a spirit of.
Togetherness.
Yeah, that, just to avoid that. Because it's sad that that is a, fortunately, a lot of parts of our city have not sat idle like that. The city's growing fast and furious, and spirits growing, and Oliver and Derby and everybody's growing. So that's, that's a positive thing in our state. So anyway, so I will be supportive of these five with the understanding myself that it sure seems like it's, words like discouraged and whatever are in there, but they're not factual, or they're not the end. So, thank you.
Commissioner Howell.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I bought my house where I live now about 21 years ago, and at that time, there was a plat around the neighborhood. There was street names and planned residential properties all around me where I live. That area didn't develop the way it was planned. Today, there's a quick shop on one corner, a Casey's on the other corner, and there's planned to be a Menards on the other corner. And that Menards will be eleven doors from my house, eleven houses down the street, I should say. Things change, progress happens, community is developed. I don't know that we can, we should think we can keep, you know, the area from developing. And I'll just say this, I have no doubt that 21st and Oliver is going to develop. With Wichita State University, with all the things they're doing there, it's going to be a developed corner. So I anticipate we'll see things that will, will change there sometime in the next numbers of years. I think we'll see, we'll see some progress there. But today, because the comprehensive plan is not a binding document, it's not, it's just a guide, it's just a reference, and it's a plan. It doesn't have any, any authority over zoning cases. It's simply something we look at. And so to me, I think that's, that's fine. I am concerned, I'll say it again, I'm concerned about the phrases that we're going to be arbitrary and discourage certain things without knowing what we're discouraging. There's a phrase in here that says that these businesses are considered an intrusion on the adjacent residential properties. That's very strong language. I'm not sure I like that strong language because we don't know what we're talking about. But with that, because I do want to show support to my colleagues, a number of them have already spoken today in support of this, I do want to support my friends across the street, and I do want to support staff. And since staff made that clear that they are now supporting the city's position, I think I will go ahead and go with the flow here and I'll support the motion this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. But before we take a vote, this is obviously the third time that I've heard this issue. So I followed it with interest, but I do believe that even though this has no direct impact on Sedgwick County, we do have an input because of the comprehensive plan. It's really an issue for city council, and I think city council spoke loud and clear when they approved this unanimously. And I agree with Commissioner Howell that we need to support our colleagues across the street in their decision because it is a direct impact on those council persons. So I will support that. I see no one else that wishes to speak today. Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here this morning. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item E, presentation of the quarterly financial report.
Morning, Rick.
Good morning, Commissioners. Rick Durham, your deputy CFO. And as you're all aware, at the end of each quarter, the Division of Finance produces a quarterly financial report. And that has been delivered to you, and it will be on the county's website, so the county citizenry can view that as well. Let me remind you, I was here last week, and we talked about the past. I wrapped up 2018. This week, you've been talking about 2020 budget. Today, we're going to talk about the present, or the first three months of this fiscal year. So what you're going to get is the results of the first three months of 2019.
How could we forget that you spoke last week, that you were here?
Right, I know, so memorable, wasn't it?
It was. It was.
Thank you. So the information that you're going to get is obviously, it's unaudited financial statements. So as you remember, last week, we had Mr. Contrera come from the audit firm and speak to you about some, maybe some audit adjustments that we had to do or something. These financial statements are unaudited, so there's my disclaimer. So the financial report is broken into three sections. The first section outlines information on a budgetary basis for different fund types, and it's going to compare activities with the previous fiscal year and the adopted and revised budgets. The second section of the report outlines the financial status of active capital projects. And the final section consists of fund statements, which provide overview of the finances on a GAAP basis. Again, I stand before you only to present, the hard work was done by the staff of the accounting department, who makes sure the numbers all go in the right place, and the budget department, who prepares the report. Budget department obviously is led by Lori and Shaw Walter Arie, and her team is here of Lee, Carly. And I'm going to introduce the newest member of the budget team today, and his name is Andrew Walker. Andrew, here with, thank you. Andrew's our newest member of the budget team, and he began Monday. So welcome to Sedgwick County.
I want to welcome him to Sedgwick County also. I know he's sitting the last couple days of our budget hearings, and I wondered who was back there, but you didn't introduce him at that time. So I think it's very nice that you introduced him today.
Yep, yep, it's my pleasure. Welcome. And then, of course, Hope Hernandez is sitting here to my minute, right? I think that's so she can answer any questions at the, at the end of this presentation. And her team represented today, I see Marty and Melissa and Brandy. Did I miss anyone? Anyway, they're the folks who put this together and make, make Lindsay and I look extremely elegant when we come up and present data. Yes, we do. So when reporting financial status, I begin with the end, if you will. So what this chart shows is projections of the different fund balances in the different funds to the end of the year, as, as we looked at it at March 31st. So when we report on financial status, we aggregate information into one of several possible groupings. The general fund, property tax-supported funds, or other operating funds, or all operating funds. So let me, I'm going to break it down here by each column. So the general fund is the county's primary operating fund and accounts for county services that do not have a designated fund of their own. It includes most general government and law enforcement function, and it receives the broadest variety of revenues. Currently, the operation of 42 divisions are funded from the general fund. And right now, what we see is revenues are estimated to exceed expenditures by a little more than $900,000 at end of year, and that's primarily due to an increase in current property taxes as a result of a 3.9% increase in assessed valuation for the current year. Moving to the right, the next column you see is debt service. This fund provides for the retirement of the county's bonded indebtedness. Expenditures from debt service funds are estimated to be $500,000 greater than revenues in 2019, and this includes $3.75 million for an extraordinary bond redemption for the 2009 general obligation Build America bonds with an August 1st 19 call date. What that will happen is, is that will result in net savings of just over $700,000 from years 2020 to 2029. As we move to the right, the other tax-supported column, the county has seven other property tax-supported funds, including bond and interest, EMS, com care, aging, the highway fund, noxious weeds in Wichita State. Each of those funds provides services related to a specific function, and the property taxes levied in each of those funds are used only to support those specific functions. These funds are expected to decrease by 1.2 million by end of the year, primarily due to decreased revenues and increased expenditures in the highway fund. As we move to the right, the county has 31 budgeted other operating funds, which are not supported with property taxes. These funds are estimated to decrease by 1.2 million, primarily to do to deliberate drawdown of fund balance in aging grants, sheriff's grants, health grants, and SCDDO grants, and projected increases in expenditures by environmental resources for storm debris cleanup. And then also, there's increases, as we see, in software and hardware maintenance by emergency Moving on to the fire district, the fire district is a distinct governmental entity that is operated as part of the Sedgwick County government and leverages property taxes, but it's reported separately, and their fund balance is estimated to increase by $700,000 by the end of the year due to anticipated tax collections. Moving to the right, the next column is the county's enterprise and internal service fund. Fund balances within this are estimated to decrease by $2.5 million by year end, primarily to, to projected decrease in health and dental insurance fund and intentional use of fund balance in the work comp fund. Then, as the very far right column obviously wraps that up, and then that references operating funds, which means the property tax-supported plus all other operating funds, so taking all those into account, you see the total fund balance of the county is projected to have a net change in fund balance of a lost $3.8 million, with an ending fund balance of all those wrapped up of $133.5 million. So again, now just looking at just the county property tax-supported funds, okay? And I jump ahead here. So what you see is, this is six years worth of data, first quarter to first quarter, so you can see there's a slight decrease in the net revenues in the first quarter of 2019. And I'm going to get into some of the reasons why that in a minute. Moving to net expenditures, at the end of the first quarter, expenditures totaled $74.6 million for county property tax-supported funds, and this does not include the fire district. This is an increase, obviously, of 28, over 2018 of $10 million. There's increases in personnel expenditures, contractual expenditures increased $6.5 million, and that's represented in the capital outlay category. And that, and some of those were for transfers due to the timing of the transfers. And as you, there'd be a common theme as you go through and you see some of the differences and some of the other charts, there's some wide variances, as you'll see. And some of those things are due to postings, like perhaps we received revenue in the first quarter this year, but we didn't receive it till April of last year. So there'll be some wide swings. But as we move through the fiscal year, and you get the second and the third quarter reports, those variances will start to shrink as they normalize out. So you can see here, the percentage change in the tax-supported funds. You see a revenue is down a tenth of a percent, while expenditures increased 15.6%. And then this is the net income based on those two figures. You see it's down to $31.2 million. So we drill in now, and we look at the revenues, and the top 10 revenues of the county tax-supported funds, and you can see there, ad lorm taxes increased about 2%. Other large things, what I'd like to draw attention to, there are a lot of small percentages. But if you look at investment income, that's an increase of 142%. And yes, that's correct, that's not a typo. And I know you get a quarterly investment report from us, and I have a slide later that's going to talk about the investment program. But a lot of this increase is due to the fact that we sold some investments that were locked in for a three-year term at a very low rate, reinvested those after the Fed had adjusted the rate at a higher rate. We took a little bit of a loss, but we're able to recover and are getting a great rate now. And that's why you see this 140% increase in our investment portfolio. And Brandy, who's sitting in the back, does a great job at managing that. And again, I have a slide later that talks about that. Also, you're just going to see there, increases in administrative reimbursements, back taxes down 10%, but overall, what you see is all revenues, including transfers, is down 1/10 of 1%. So here we look at the personnel expenditures, and again, let me remind you that the largest expense that we have in the county is people. So that's why we look at the personnel expenditures on a chart of its own. As you can see, salaries and wages up 6/10 of a percent, pension contributions, again, up 12%. Those are driven by capers, overtime up 19%, and then all other personnel expenditures up 48%. And those are things that are payroll taxes and unemployment taxes and things like that. That all is rolled into that, so that's why you see a large increase there. So here are some of the non-personnel expenditures in the property tax-supported funds. And what you see here is, let me explain a couple of these here. Let's see, medical professional services, I want to draw attention to that. There's a 21.3% reduction there, you see, and that's primarily due to the cost for detention medical expenses. Software and hardware maintenance, you see an 11.5% decrease there. I know there was some discussion during budget deliberations about what software and hardware maintenance, so I began to really dive in and look at that. So all non-personnel expenditures you see have increased about 30%. So now we change gears, and we look at the non-property tax funds of the county. And again, let me remind, the county has 31 operating funds that are not supported with property taxes. And in these non-tax funds, revenue for the first quarter increased $1.1 million. The expenditures in the non-property tax funds increased $2.6 million from the first quarter. So this is a year-over-year. You can see the increase of 5% on revenue, 11% on expenditures. And then as we drill in, this is what we see. So again, top revenues in the non-tax special revenue fund. So, again, top revenues in the non-tax special revenue funds. So, the, I draw your attention to maybe some of the larger percentage swings. We see state revenue for K-DADs, and that's primarily the new grant that we received in conjunction with USD 259. And some of that is on the timing on receiving dispersments from the state as compared to 2018, and that's what I mentioned earlier about the timing you're gonna see. State revenue corrections, again, timing of when we receive revenues, that's why you're seeing that. The federal revenue state pass-through of 74.5, that's the timing of the WIC program revenue, and also $100,000 in reimbursement from KDOT that we did not receive in 2018. So, bottom line is, all revenues, including transfers, had about a 5%, almost 6% increase in revenues. So, now we look at some key expenditures. So, first one I'd like to mention is grant awards, that second line there, that 30% increase. And what we saw is, we saw increases in CDDO grant awards of $164,000, community capacity development grant, senior center services, aging meals, JAG grant, and housing first grants. Those are all increases from the first quarter of 2018. And once again, largely due to the timing of when we're receiving that revenue and when it gets posted to our system. So, you can see if I needed to address any of those others, I'm sorry. So, as we move forward, so I'm gonna shift away from the budgetary statements and move into what I talked about, the second part of the financial quarterly report is. And this is a portion that is found behind the fund statements tab, and this chart shows six years of historical trend, total fund balance on a GAAP basis. So, you can see back over the period of time that there's a clear pattern. We, we collect taxes in the first couple of quarters, and then we spend down as we see through the year. So, the red numbers and the red data point is the first quarter, so you can look back over that five-year period and see that we're above perhaps 14 through 17, but slightly below 2018. This chart shows the same data, but what we're showing is, as a percentage, and it shows the unrestricted general fund balance as a percentage of budgeted expenditures. So, I'll remind you that the county has a fund balance policy that states that unrestricted general fund balance be at least 20% of budgeted expenditures. So, that policy is shown by that brown line on the 20% line. So, you can see again, the pattern, clear pattern, year-over-year, and at the end of the first quarter, we sit at 48% fund balance, and that's well in line with the previous years. I told you I was gonna talk about the investment portfolio in a minute, and here it is. So, what we see, you can, you can see the, the jump in our yield, and that's the blue line that you see there. So, what you see is, is in June of 18, we looked at the market, okay, Brandy looked at the market, and she did some analysis and determined that if we take some of those three-year investments that we had locked up at maybe less than 1%, and we sold those, and we took a small penalty on those, reinvested them, and what you see is, is that she's reinvesting now north of 2%. So, that's why you saw that 142% increase in investment income on, on the prior chart. So, I just wanna say that I think, I think she's doing a really great job in investing the county's cash. Move now, we look at a couple of significant capital projects. So, what we have here is, on the first one, we've had the adult detention facility, first floor and the courthouse space, and that bid was aborted, awarded on May 8th. And we have the security camera upgrade and standardization, and this project is gonna begin May 27th of 19, or projected to begin May 27th, and should be complete by October 2019. The next one, juvenile detention facility, security camera upgrade. This project is expected to start in June with a November completion date. The next is a bridge on Pawnee between 127th Street East and 143rd Street East. Construction began in October of 18 and is expected to complete next month, and I can report that I drive by that a lot, and I see that the crane is down, so I see a lot of progress out there. I'm pretty excited about that road being open. Thanks, David. Same thing with the next one, that's Pawnee between 143rd and 159th. Construction began in October of 18 and is expected to complete next month. So, those bridges are actually side-by-side and, and then the last is a pedestrian bridge over, the construction began on that in February of 19 and is expected to be completed in fall of 19. So, now we move away and we look at the leading economic indicators of the Wichita area, and this data is taken from the Center for Economic Development and Business Research website. And as you can see, you see this particular chart every quarter, and you can see, it goes back to the '03, so you can see the fairly sharp increase from '03 to '07. Obviously, the recession hits in '08, and then the slow climb out, and that's not a, it's not an uncommon theme. I know you hear that from Jeremy Hill, if you ever listen to him talk, and you, to different people around the area, talk about the slow recovery that Wichita is, and this is just a chart that shows that. So, some of the key metrics as we look at long-term, and this is year-over-year, and gives six years' worth of history, so this is 2018 data that we just completed. So, you can see our tax base growth of 4%. Home sales slightly down. New home permits slightly down. Number of registered, mortgages registered slightly down, but our sales and use taxes up slightly, and our unemployment rate is slightly down, it's, it's just a tenth of a percent. So, now we look at the short-term trends, and the comparison on this chart compares the first quarter of 2018 to the first quarter of 2019. So, that's, that's what we're looking at, the difference between the first quarters. So, home sales are down in that first quarter. Mortgages registered down again, as, as I mentioned on the previous slide. Our sales and use tax up a half a percent. The total employed up 1%, and then the total unemployed, down a half a percent from the previous, but you notice the arrow is up, but because that's a positive trend. I know there's always some confusion about that negative number, but arrow up. So, now we look at some of the fiscal stresses and the, and the county trends that we see. So, I know you got a lot of measurements last week when I talked about the CAFR, and we talked about flexibility and liquidity and all those things. Well, what we're doing here is, we're just gonna look at these again. So, our liquidity is down from the previous year. Our flexibility, which is our unrestricted balance as a percentage of expenditures, is flat at 26%. Our property values increased a little bit from 17 to 18. Our direct debt per capita dipped slightly. Our debt burden, that's debt service as a percentage of general fund revenues, down slightly. Our effective property tax rate is flat, and our reliance on property tax is down 30, down slightly. So, now what I'm gonna do on the next two slides is, I'm gonna do some comparison, if you will. And on this first slide, and this is a county-to-county comparison, and I'll, I won't talk about every number on the chart, I'll just let you all look through that at your leisure and if you happen to have questions or whatever. Johnson County, obviously, we look at Johnson County, Kansas as a comparison. Wyandotte County also, and we look at Tulsa County, which is obviously Tulsa County, Oklahoma, and then Douglas County, Nebraska, and that is the county that Omaha is in. I'm gonna move to the next chart, and we're gonna compare Cedric County to some cities sort of in the same region. So, the rules are a little different, obviously, between counties and cities, so some of the variant swings might be, or the differences might be rather large, but remember, some of the rules that they have and some of the way they do accounting are, are slightly different than counties. But again, we look at the city of Wichita, the city of Tulsa, Oklahoma City, and Omaha, and I thought it was appropriate that we put Omaha in there because they also have a AAA baseball team, and we're about to have a AAA baseball team, and, no? So, on that, I'm gonna start wrapping up. Obviously, what we see is, the county is in sound financial condition, and this report shows modest improvement in property tax-supported funds. There is an increasing reliance on taxes to fund government, and you saw that, there was a slide that spoke to tax revenue versus program revenue that you saw in the CAFR, that, so we continue to see that trend. Our revenue grows modestly or is decreasing in some cases, but our cost of doing business continues to increase, and so we have those continual costs of doing business increases in our utilities and things of that nature. Our focus, obviously, is being responsive to changing citizen needs and the commission priorities. And with that, I would attempt to answer any questions you may have.
Question for Rick. Mr. Howell?
Thank you for the presentation. You always do a great job. This is always a, a great report. Thank you for all you do to put this together. I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind, on slide four. That's a really large increase, a $10 million increase. And you mentioned it was personnel expenditures, not fire department. What, what do you mean by personnel expenditures?
Let me look at my notes. Pardon me? I'm gonna look at my notes, sorry. I gave you a right answer here. So, we're looking at slide, you're talking, the expenditure slide?
Yeah, right.
So, the increase is $10 million. Obviously, there's personnel expenditures only increased $1.6 million. Contractual expenditures increased $6.5 million. And what I'll tell you about a contractual, the increase there is, that's a lot of that is, in the first quarter, you're gonna see people that do shopping carts for contracts, so they're encumbering the entire year's worth of money there. So, that's why you see a large swing there.
Okay.
So, is they're locking it in for the entire year.
So, as we, through the, through the fiscal year, that, that comparison may be more normalized?
Absolutely, yes.
That's a good answer. Thank you for that. I had a couple of other questions here. And you also mentioned on slide eight, payroll and unemployment taxes is, is what caused a 48% increase on personal expenditures?
You're talking about personnel expenditures?
Yeah.
Right? Well, that's all the other things that are, I mean, that come into account. That's not, that's not a health insurance. It's not pension contributions. It's not salary and wages. It's not overtime. It's all of those other things that are taken into account, all other expenses in the payroll account. So, what you're seeing it, oh, okay. So, what you're seeing is, is all of those things that it's, it's unemployment taxes, it's social security taxes, it's all of those things. So, when you see that, key, that, let me find that slide. When you see that, oh, I can see that one. Thank you. That, all of the personnel expenditures, so you see the difference really is about $300,000. It's just a very large percent. And what also could key, could be a part of that, and I'll verify this, it could be that there was one more pay period in there this year as opposed to last. Yep, okay. Pardon me?
So, one of the important caveats to remember about this year's budget, too, sorry, Lindsey Poviso, CFO, is we had the bonus payout in January this year. That was a one-time payout. We won't see those expenses again throughout the life of the, the forecast or the actuals this year. And so, that causes an increase, too, in all of those rates and contributions because we are paying the full, like payroll taxes on that amount.
Okay, well, that, that's a good answer. I always wanna see if it's a trend that's gonna stick around. There was, sounds like a temporary effect that caused that to happen. Another really significant change I think is interesting is, is on slide nine. I don't understand the eight-and-a-half million dollar swing in non-personnel expenditures. That's, is this, is this part of the same, part of the same reasoning, I'm guessing?
Chart number again?
Chart number nine, I'm sorry. Slide nine. Eight-and-a-half million dollar is a pretty, is a pretty big...
Sure, and those, and those are all, you know, we'll go back and look at that exactly, but those are all non-personnel expenditures, so you're looking at grant awards, you're looking at all the revenue, the, excuse me, the expenditures. A large part of that, I think, is transfers that took place this first quarter that did not take place in the first quarter of last year. There's a large number of transfers for projects.
Okay, all right. And then, on slide 14, you mentioned grant awards had a 30.4% difference, and you mentioned something about senior center services receiving additional funds. Can you explain that a little?
It wasn't additional funds. Commissioner, those are all, those grants that I listed is the fact that we've received those revenues or that in the first quarter this year, whereas last year, it's a, it's a timing of when the postings are. And I can see my accounting director out of the corner of my eye giving me the affirmative on that.
Okay. All right, very good.
Thank you.
And I guess, maybe, maybe my last question, but two things. On slide, well, I guess I have a couple, on slide 19, that date is 18 months old. Can we, can we get an update to that chart? I would hope that that is...
Oh, you know what? That's, that's a misprint. I'm sorry.
So, it's really up to date?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry. That's a legend.
Okay.
I put that in there on purpose to see if anybody would catch it. Not really.
Okay, well, that, that's good. And then, then the chart below that on slide, slide 20, the, try to understand your arrows here, unemployment rate dropped from 3.5 to 3.4. You have a down arrow. Should that be an up arrow?
Okay, yes.
To be consistent with the next slide?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. I think that's, that's really all my questions. Thank you for a great presentation. I would like to make a motion, we receive and file.
Thank you.
Second? Thank you. Any other questions for Rick? Hey, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items F through M this morning.
Move to approve Foxtrot through Mike.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Any none? Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Mr. Papoun, we have anything today?
No, sir.
Nothing for legislative. Madam Clerk, next item?
Other.
Do you know, any Commissioners have anything for other? Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to remind everyone and inform those who don't know, there is a vigil for Bucky tonight at College Hill United Methodist Church. He is the trans student who passed away this past week. If you're interested, it is at College Hill United Methodist from 7:00 to 9:00. That address is 2930 East First Street. We will be having a call to action as far as what we're trying to do in our community. And I also just kinda wanna point out, you know, for children in this community, for the mother of two school-aged kids, and for those of you who had school-aged kids, we live in a different time. We live in a time where everybody is so concerned with their phones and what's on their phones, and I just, I can't encourage people enough to look up, pay attention to who's around you, be kind. That's really, I, I don't wanna beat a dead horse, but you can't be too kind. So, today, when you're going throughout your day, smile at someone. I know I said it last week, and maybe I'll say it at every commission meeting until I no longer sit here, but if that's what I have to do, I will. So, be kind, and if you guys wanna join us tonight, a college hill starts at 7:00.
Thank you. Any other Commissioners have anything for other? Seeing nothing? Madam Clerk, next item?
Executive session.
We have no need for executive session today. Oh, therefore, I see nothing else. Therefore, I see nothing else come before the Board.